I don't know about fire, seems like it might be in Morgantown.
All right. All right. Welcome, this is the Committee of the Whole, we're in City Hall Council Chambers 389 Spruce Street. It's Tuesday, March 25th, 2025, at 7:00 PM. This meeting is going to be broadcast live via YouTube at City of Morgantown on our YouTube channel. Note, the Committee of the Whole meetings at the City of Morgantown, the Morgantown City Council are intended to provide an opportunity for the council to receive information, ask questions, and identify policy options in an informal setting. No official action is taken at these meetings. At this Committee of the Whole meeting, the following matters are scheduled. We begin with a presentation, a presentation of the Municipal Identification Card Program options. Marketing and Communications Director, Brad, pronounce your last name for me.
My name is Brad Riffey, I'm the PR, Marketing and Communications Director for the City of Morgantown. Thanks for having me this evening.
I always want to make sure I'm spelling your name, pronouncing your name correctly. So if you would take it away.
Wonderful, thank you. Do you mind if I put it up on the screen?
Please.
If you would prefer it. I was going to say good luck with that, but you're prepared.
I showed up an hour and a half early.
Prepared.
I'm always concerned about not being able to display a presentation, so. Again, thank you for having me this evening, good evening, council. I appreciate this opportunity to present what we call the Morgantown Municipal ID Program. Please remember that as we move through this information, at this time, it is only a concept. The goal of this presentation is to show council what a program like this entails. If the idea is well received, we would love the opportunity to work with city officials and administration to fine tune the program while exploring next steps. I'm excited to present this initiative for our community because of the benefits it offers. The Morgantown Municipal ID Program aims to provide all residents with a form of identification that enhances access to essential city services and fosters community engagement and connectivity. The municipal ID will serve as a reliable means for individuals to access potentially banking services, library resources, and even transportation services in the future. And I'll talk about that a little bit more here. And we just think that overall, for all of our residents, this would be a huge benefit. We did speak with Mountain Line Transit Authority, and this program does have the potential to coordinate with their transportation services, so. Do we have details right now? No, not exactly, but this is definitely something that we would discuss in the future. From an economic business development standpoint, local businesses and organizations within the city can become community partners in this program. By offering discounts and perks to municipal ID cardholders, we can create a more engaged local economy and strengthen our sense of community. Plus, we see this as a tool that our Main Street friends and others could use as well. Moving on to the identification holder information and application process to receive or be issued a municipal ID, applicants will need to meet certain eligibility criteria. This includes providing proof of residency in Morgantown and other necessary documentation. I would like to note for security purposes, once documents are verified, they would be returned to the cardholder. To protect our citizens in the City of Morgantown, we would opt to not store essential documents. We understand that council's input is vital when it comes to this stage, and again, we're eager to explore any edits or questions members might have, including where the program might be housed and any recommended adjustments to the applicant requirements. As you can see from your packet, I hope everybody had the opportunity to review that, we've outlined a draft application form that includes recommended fees. However, these two can certainly be adjusted. Additionally, we are considering including sections on allergies, veteran status, organ donor preferences that would be included on that ID card. The current minimum age requirement that we placed in the application is 14, but we'd be happy to discuss other opportunities as well. In conclusion, I'd like to emphasize that the Morgantown Municipal ID benefits all residents regardless of age. Whether someone is a longstanding citizen or a newcomer, this program is designed to enhance accessibility. Residents will be able to access city and library services again, interact with our police and fire departments more effectively and efficiently, and possibly verify bus ridership in the near future. Also, I do want to say that this would benefit unhoused residents as well. Upon verification, through an affidavit of hardship, that fee could be waived for those individuals. And then this program, in that aspect, is definitely in line with other municipalities across the country who've adopted a similar program to this. So I would like to thank council for your leadership. Your feedback and collaboration will be invaluable if council chooses to move forward. I want to thank you for your time as well, and I look forward to answering any questions council might have. Thank you.
Wonderful. Seems like this might be a good time to ask a people questions.
Let me just compliment, if that's okay, instead of questioning, a compliment?
Yes, sir.
So the reason this came up is when City Manager Hawes was here, I had mentioned to him that Councilor Butcher had talked about wanting a municipal ID and the conversations that we had had with Mountain Line in terms of trying to get them to intertwine, interconnect. And he had actually introduced me to Brad the first time. And since then, Brad, this is beyond anything I could have ever dreamed up, so I just want to express my gratitude for all the hard work you put into this and how much I appreciate it.
Well, again, I appreciate that. I'm just thankful to be a part of the City of Morgantown and, you know, be able to provide services. Our ultimate goal at the end of the day is to do the best we can for our citizens. So I really hope that this, and I personally, professionally see this as a tool that's going to greatly benefit our community and look forward to exploring it with everyone. But I think I do appreciate that.
Brad, what would be a similar, see, I see where some of the states, but is there a city similar to us that you would point to as an example of they've done a good job similar to Morgantown?
Sure, there are quite a few. One comes to mind would be the Bureau of Madison in New Jersey. They have a smaller population, I think their population is 17,000. It's comparable, right? But a lot of the information we see here has been pulled from multiple programs. I tried to take the best of all worlds and put it together and customize it to fit Morgantown. I think all communities are different, but we all share common values, which is great. And that's one to increase connectivity, also to encourage folks to shop local, buy local. I think that's a great perk. So again, we see this as a tool that could be used across the board. But Bureau of Madison comes to mind. I've had, I want to thank their communications department, and I spoke with them. I spoke with some representatives at the City of Detroit and other municipalities as well. And they all find these programs to be beneficial for their residents.
Actually, this is something that we had considered, I think, long ago for other purposes, particularly when we're talking about annexation and the benefits of living in the city and taking advantage of those. But in particular, I have a question for you, and perhaps Joe or Brian is the answer. We base city residents on the fact that they resided in city.
Correct.
And to some degree here, what we're looking to do is solve a problem that we have with our unhoused population. In particular, I think as we addressed the difficulty of transportation on the bus. Is there a mechanism in place that we can do conveniently that will satisfy that requirement?
To address transportation?
No.
I'm sorry.
To identify our unhoused who obviously don't have an address.
Oh, certainly. So, yeah, let's say someone's being served by Gray Shelter. We would be able to work with that individual. And we've included requirements on proof of identity such as, let's say they're in the Homeless Management Information System, HMIS. We've made that a requirement. We don't see that in some situations when, like, I'm not sure, I'm pretty sure that's not, is that, maybe you can help me with this, or that's not a requirement with, that's, maybe that's not an acceptable form of documentation when applying for a driver's license.
You're correct.
So, we've included that. We've made it to where, while we acknowledge that we need a stringent, we need a process and we need to make sure we're collecting the right documents, we also don't want to create any more barriers. So we've included pieces of information that we could use and verify as municipality to help individuals who are in an unhoused situation.
And I'm totally for that. I'm just wondering the difficulty involved here and whether or not we procured the cooperation of the correct organizations that might enable this to happen.
Sure. I can say that I've had conversations with Gray Shelter. This is something that they believe would benefit that part of the community. While this program, this is, I do want to repeat that the program is designed to benefit all residents. Definitely, we consider them to be a part of our community, so we wanted to make sure that there was a piece in there that supported them as well.
No, I agree. I think the idea of getting cooperation out of our merchants and perhaps some of our activities that may be beneficial in promoting this too. But I am looking to see that this is useful to all of our residents.
Yes, sir. That's a great question. And so we've, again, if you take a look at the point system, six points of proof are required, four for identification, and two for residency points. If we move forward with this, obviously, we would make sure that we seek council's advice and recommendations when it comes to this list of identifying documents. But we did include voter's registration card in specific areas, so we could put people in a position to succeed when interacting with the municipal services. I do want to point out that this cannot be used as a driver's license. It does not replace the driver's license, they cannot use it to travel, things like that. This is solely for use in the municipality.
So tell us a little bit more about working with potentially, like, for instance, a library. Have you spoken to them or?
No, I haven't. So there were a few conversations that we haven't had yet, just out of respect for council. Once we do have your approval to move forward and iron out some details, or I would say the smaller and larger details of the program. This really here, I look at as the nuts and bolts of the program and what it might look like. We would love to have that conversation with the library. Now, there's a few municipalities that use the ID as a library card, but most municipalities just allow folks to present that ID at the library to obtain a library card. And I have the library card application here, and they do need to provide proof of identification when, after filling this out and submitting it. So that would definitely help them access, you know, the services of the library and very thankful for our library and the services they offer.
Great. Any other questions, concerns?
Just to say, I really appreciate how you ran with this program. You really took it upon yourself to get a lot of this stuff together. I think, Bill, yeah, like, we would still, there's still going to be difficulty with certain people with, in terms of like proving residency and stuff like that. But it's to try to lower the barriers a little bit. I would hope, you know, some municipalities have used these sort of systems as like low-level bank as well. That's something that obviously would require a lot more infrastructure, maybe many years down the road, but like, you know, up to $200 in like a bank card that somebody could have. And that could be really useful for people, but, yeah, I think even just having it as like a bus pass or library card to get into any number of our municipal facilities would be great as well, so.
And I do want to mention cost. Cost is a part of everything in life. So third parties, when they operate a program like this, could be anywhere from $30,000 to $40,000, depending on the size of the municipality. We were able to reach out to another hardware and software provider. Discovered that was around $10,000. But I would like to thank our folks at Mountain Line. They were able to point us in another direction. So we're looking at hardware and software costs, startup costs around $2,000. So we were very mindful of cost efficiency as well.
What do you anticipate in terms of administration?
So that's a great question. We thought about that, we have a few ideas. Would love to sit down and chat with administration about where this might be housed. Before we commit anybody, or specifically state departments, out of respect for them and administration, I'd like to chat with folks about what that might look like. But municipalities, like, for example, some of the smaller ones, or I shouldn't say smaller ones, I should say municipalities that are similar to our population usually set up appointments daily, maybe two to three hours a day. So individuals, residents are able to fill out applications, submit those applications, and on the application, they check which documents they plan to bring to that appointment. And then, once they get there, we already have all that information in the system queued up, ready to go. And an Excel document that interfaces with the software program. I think it takes about 30 seconds to print the ID. So maybe a five-minute visit. Now, there will be some training that we need to look at just to make sure that whoever is reviewing these documents is brought up to speed on, you know, being able to recognize fake documents or invalid documents. But I can report, and I did look into this as well, fraud in these programs is slim to none. Just because, I mean, these aren't recognized by the state or the federal government. So if Subway offers a 10% discount to a municipal ID cardholder, maybe that's, if somebody does try to create one, that's probably the only thing that they're going to benefit from are some discounts offered by local businesses.
So I'm assuming some sort of online reservation for a specific time at a specific location?
Yes, sir. Yeah, we could put that on our website, the application form. If you don't mind, I'll scroll down. So these are the required documents. Here's the application. This application could be placed on our website as a fillable form. Once it's filled out, it would be sent to the appropriate department.
Did you look into how many West Virginia municipalities have a program like this?
I don't believe any in the state of West Virginia currently have a municipal ID program.
So we would be the first.
In the design that you see on there, I just took, I tried my best. I thought that's something that we might consider. That's not set in stone either. And I do want to mention that the hardware does, and the software does have the capability of printing something that does look like that. So we are looking at a watermark, we're looking at a holographic in the background, something that looks nice for our residents.
Photo, too?
Yes.
Just struck me as humorous, but I think in your eyes, it might have been better color as opposed to Annie.
Sure. Sure.
Anybody have anything else? Thank you.
Appreciate it, Brad.
Thank you all.
Yeah, thanks, Brad.
I appreciate it. I do want to mention, I think the cost of one ID would be around 33 cents. I forgot to mention that, and I apologize for that.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Now we are to our public portion. So if you're wanting to speak, you would come to the podium and you would state your address, and then you would have the opportunity to speak. All right, thank you. All right. My eyes and Annie's handwriting are an interesting combination. All right. This is your opportunity to come to the podium and speak, and it looks like Annie's name is first.
Annie Cronin, York Human Rights Commission. I have spent the last weekend, we'll say, being deeply distressed with the state legislature. I haven't dipped my toes into those waters before, now I know why. There'd be alligators in there. I was particularly concerned about the Home Rule bill that was before the Senate, SB 579, because it looks to take away any human rights rules that we have made. The entire discussion of it on the Senate floor was about Morgantown's ordinances for protecting persons of alternative lifestyles and the things that we protect. And at one point, somebody said, but we can do something statewide to include veterans. That should be okay. So they like that part that we protect veterans. Nobody else does, but Morgantown does. And we are the evil beings here, however, we did something right, apparently. Because even people who are most vehement about eliminating all the important elements of Home Rule are okay with protecting veterans' rights. So we've got that going for us. I don't understand why they want to have Home Rule as a thing, even except that they collect $2,000 from each city each year to be a member. Because the whole point of Home Rule is the localities make their own rules. If people don't like them, they go on the ballot, we know that. And I haven't heard any complaints about our protections. I'm sure there are people who complain about them. They don't complain to me about them. It's good because I would complain back. But this is the ultimate big government of the state telling us that we can't have rules for the City of Morgantown, even though we're paying our $2,000 bucks a year to be members of Home Rule. Why do we have Home Rule if we're not going to let the home have its rules? The answer to that was because we don't want people being confused, because as you go from one town to another, you won't know what the rules are. Most people don't care. And the rest can look them up, and they can read them, because they're public documents. So the vote was interesting. I made many phone calls, and each office I reached was told, no, you're the only person who's called on this one. I haven't heard anything at all. So there may have been a lot of emails and letters written, but they didn't say anything about that. But contrary to what I'd heard in a meeting the night before, people who were all amped people who were all amped up to have their phone banks ready. I guess they hadn't gotten out of bed before the vote. So the two local senators, Mr. Alvario and Tocarcia, both voted no, which made me very happy. And all the people I talked to voted no, which means I didn't talk to enough people. So now it goes to the House. And it's anybody's guess. But I still have to ask, why do we have Home Rule at all if we're not going to respect the home's rules? We're not allowed to reduce the murder penalty. We're not allowed to do anything that is contrary to West Virginia law. But there's nothing that says that we can't expand human rights. Apparently that is offensive to many in the chamber. So that is my report for today. Any questions? This is, if any of the halls, it's allowed to ask, right?
Thank you.
Is that they get lost?
She's got her time down. Thank you very much.
It only took me a couple of years.
Thanks for your work. So is there anyone else wishing to speak?
Hi, I'm Stephanie Hunt, 6th Ward, 220 Front Street. And I saw that Easton Roller Mills is on the agenda. And I think that the city expecting stewardship of Easton Roller Mills is a great opportunity for us to preserve our local history. I want to encourage the city to think about how these kind of sites can be made more accessible and usable, not just for tourists, but mainly for our own neighborhoods, like having community programming there, events, educational programming, thoughtful signage, or regular open hours, definitely things to consider. Thanks much.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we're going to move to the public portion. So now we have our items for discussion. And so we're starting with the discussion to move forward with the municipal identification program. I don't know if there's a suggested methodology for us to move forward with this because it's not necessarily going to go right to an agenda, maybe more, get more.
I would ask, R.C.
Information, and that's. So I'm wondering what the suggestion is for how to move this forward, assuming that this group is instructing us to move forward.
Counselors, one thing you might consider is just a resolution directing the city manager, along with your communications director, to establish a program and then bring that back to council for final approval and any necessary steps. I had previously prepared a form of resolution that would do that, working with Councilor Butcher at his initial request, and could present that at your next meeting if you'd like to move forward with the program generally, as Brad described for you tonight. But give him the time, along with Damian, to work out those details and then find out specifically any actions that council might want to take in conjunction with that, like requiring that it be acceptable ID for certain city functions or something like that.
So are those two options, or that's an option for resolution or an option to just have it be more informal?
Yeah. Yeah, I think that one option is to adopt the resolution, direct the city manager to establish the program. Anything that would require council action by ordinance or otherwise, we could bring back to city council as part of that program at a later time. But the resolution could be on your next agenda.
Would you all like to see a resolution on our next agenda? Yeah?
Sure.
All right. We would like that. Next item, consideration of acceptance of the Easton Roller Mill property and assets of the Monongalia County Historical Society. And I don't know if.
Jason Burns with the Morgantown Museum, and then Dick Walters with the Monongalia County Historical Society.
Yeah, I didn't know if you had comments or you're here to support or how you wanted. If you have comments, you would need to come to the podium, and we would welcome that.
So, counsel. My name is Jason Burns. I'm the manager of the Morgantown History Museum. And we were approached in August of 2024 to buy the Monongalia County Historical Society to consider taking over the operations and ownership of the Easton Roller Mill, which is, if you don't know, it's near, somewhere between the airport and the Glenn Mark Center. They're on West Run Road. And after consideration, we have, you know, we have the documentation and things in order. And we'd just like the council to highly consider the city taking over the mill as a historical site. It has been used in perpetuity, well, since the beginning, since it was created. It was originally built around 1865, 1867. It has existed as part of Morgantown's infrastructure since that time. It's always been in operation up until 1941, when it closed, when the Lay family closed it down. It never closed from lack of interest. It closed because the wheat was no longer available in the area. It was wheat production was moving out west. But I'll stop with storytelling. I'm a storyteller, so I'll try to keep it brief. So we have Dick Walters here with us. He is the treasurer of the current Monongalia County Historical Society. He is also a former council member himself. So he was telling me that he left here in 1974. So he's one of your compatriots. And he and I have worked since August of 2024 to make this a reality and make it part of the museum's holdings. It will be the largest acquisition the museum's ever made, I do believe, into our collection. In addition to the mill, there is a plot of land that comes with it, which could be used as an event space and has been used as an event space in the past. It has been used for an event called Mill Day. They also have given tours of the mill to school groups, church groups, other interested parties. They have a large collection of historical documentation that has been well researched through the university's programs with the Monongalia County Historical Society. Those publications are also being given to us as part of this. They can be reproduced, republished in formats that will be available to the public. In addition to that, there are other historical artifacts and items within the inside of the mill itself. The ones that come to mind immediately are the four wooden clock faces that once were on the old courthouse tower, clock tower, that are in the building, along with other tools and artifacts from the past of Monongalia County's history. This mill was originally built by the Coontz family. It was sold a couple of times throughout its history. The Pick and Paw family owned it for a while, then there were a few others. The last family that owned it was the Lay family, L-E-Y. And it was granted to, or deeded to the Historical Society in 1980, and they have had it ever since. It has been fixed and mended, and it is fully operational. If we wanted to, I do believe we could make cornmeal and flour in the mill. So we could even have our own brand of Morgantown flour, if we could find it. The possibilities are truly enormous for the site. So we could have an event space for the city. And it is in, we had a engineering survey done of the building already. The engineer found it to be very sound. It is four stories, including a basement and an attic space. The roof is fine, the foundation is fine. There is a flood wall that's been built around it by the Monongalia County Historical Society, which is protecting the building from flooding, and it has successfully done that. The only problems with the building that the engineer really found were it needs painted. There is some soffit damage, and the deck on the outside of it should be replaced and made more accessible. It is not up to ADA code at this point, so that needs replaced as well. But that also gives us a chance to maybe reimagine the decking to be useful more as an event space rather than just an entrance to the mill. So there you have it.
What a wonderful proposal.
It's an amazing legacy that we're being offered. It really, really is. It's on the National Register of Historic Places as well. It was placed on the National Register in 1976 during the bicentennial year. So it truly is a wonderful space. I've been in it a few times. And in addition to that, we're also, there's a, I forgot to mention, there's a building in the rear that is basically a cookhouse that has, contains tables, propane grills, canopies, things like that, that the city would also be given as part of this. So we're basically being given a space outfitted completely already that's been used before. In addition to that as well, we will also receive their funding, which at the time of the proposal was $27,000. And the repairs and the operations don't, would not, would barely touch that per year at this point.
Generous all the way around. Does, Dick, I didn't catch his last name.
Walters.
Walters?
Walters, W-A-L-T-E-R-S.
Would you like to speak? You're here. This is our opportunity to highlight this.
Well, I think, Jason, I'm Dick Walters. I've been the treasurer for 27, 28 years now of the society. And over the years, we've been very active. COVID really hit us hard because we had four dinner meetings a week with speakers, and we couldn't do that. And of course, our clientele and the membership is getting older. Some have passed away, some have moved away. And frankly, it's really hard to get the younger people interested. And a lot of couples have two jobs, and so it's been difficult. Although we have maintained our membership list up around 140 mailing labels, and a lot of those are couples, so probably 180 or more. I have been running tours at the mill for many years, and we've been doing that in the summer. They're free. I have been getting money from the county commission for the past few years, about $5,000 a year, which pays for student guides. And also helps, we were putting out a newsletter twice a year, and also our annual publications, which consist of maybe two to five or six articles of historical interest. And there are, I think, 23 volumes, if I remember now. And so it's quite an interesting accumulation of things about the area. And it's a society not just for the city or the county, but the area. And although most of the things that we have dealt with are, have been in the county. I have solicited articles from the students at the university in the history department, and that's worked very well. We had a small incentive for that. We had Kenneth Carvell, who was very active in the society, edited these proceedings for many years. And he, well, when he quit doing that, we set up a fund to give an award for the students, the best papers. And up to three papers, and they would get $200 each. So that was a little bit of incentive. But most of these papers were things the students had already done for classes. And then we worked with them to edit them and add to them and get them in shape for this publication. So we're pretty proud of those publications. And there's an accumulation of those. We always printed more than the members received. So I would say of the 23, there's probably an average of at least 100 or more publications left in each year. And those are assets which can be sold from anywhere from $5 to $10 on up. And we've been doing that through the website. I don't know if you've had a chance to look at our website. Where it talks about the society and the publications and the mill itself. So the annual operating expenses for the mill, just for water and electricity and cut the grass, about $2,000, and insurance, a couple hundred dollars for insurance. So it's not very big. And from time to time, some maintenance is required, of course. As Jason mentioned, the, one of the main things now is some of the soffit needs replacing. And on the front deck, I think the structure is good, but some of the boards need replacing too. It's treated lumbered. And aside from that, I think it's in pretty good shape. So if anyone has any particular questions, I'd be glad to try to answer. I apologize for my voice, I'm so congested. I don't know whether it's spring already, but whatever.
Thank you for speaking with us anyway. I think Counselor Clarky has a question.
I do have curiosity more than anything else. First of all, thank you for your efforts and your continued perseverance in keeping such a valuable historic site. So I do appreciate that. I am curious, and I've been there in the past, and I've seen your online where you have the video demonstrating as a walkthrough. Do we have somebody, or is there some mechanism for training somebody to fire this thing up and show it off? Is that going to be a lost art? How do we go about maintaining that capability of actually, you say it's functioning, and how do we maintain it and how do we keep it going? What's that take in your experience?
Well, one reason we've reached out to the history museum because they have structure, and we really don't have that. I mean, we, the members just are not participating as they need to keep this going. So we need some formal arrangement where somebody can monitor things, and if a board needs replaced or whatever, they can take care of it. And I think Jason's with the history museum could do that quite easily. It's not a full-time job, but somebody needs to do that.
Is there a manual? I mean, you know, can you go through?
I have a lot of manuals. I have a lot of guidebooks for the student guides that, you know, this is the things you do. And we've gone through a short training program each year for them.
Well, if we're going to produce flour and cornmeal from Morgantown.
I have a volunteer who's been running the equipment. Originally, it was a steam mill. During World War II, we're pretty sure the boiler got scrapped for scrap for the war. Because in '41 or '40 was the last known attempt to make flour there, so they must have had the boiler. But by that time, they were bringing in flour from the Midwest. And also farmers just weren't growing enough material here to keep a mill like that in use. So that fell through, and then the boiler's gone. When the society took over in 1980, it took about three or four years to make some repairs. And also, excuse me, they added a compressed air tank and an air compressor so we could run the machinery with the compressed air instead of having steam. And that works very easily, you just turn switches. And I have a volunteer who's for years has run that machinery. I felt I did enough with the society. I did not, I'm an engineer, but I did not want to learn to run that. So, and he's available. The grass cutting has been done by a neighbor down the road, which we pay $50 or $60 a cutting whenever it needs it. So those are the main expenses for it. But I'm sure that, and I've talked to him, we can have people who can run the mill, run the machinery and so on.
Oh, good, thank you. You set us for an curiosity, we appreciate it.
In terms of the publications you were talking about, so like on your website, if I was looking at them, it's like all these different ones that we can order. But you say you have like extra copies, well, I guess you would be storing them somewhere. Okay, and we would inherit all those?
Yes, they need to be marketed a little better than just the website.
But yeah, just like reading through them. I was a history major, so maybe it's just me, but they seem extremely interesting and informative stuff that's in there, like stuff about the Spanish flu, Morgantown, going through that.
That was opportune because that came out just as the COVID hit. So we sold a lot of extra copies of that.
I can imagine. But yeah, I didn't even, you know, I didn't know that these existed. So, and this looks like some really great pieces of Morgantown history. So appreciative of that.
I had a question, maybe for the city attorney. This is, this property is outside of the city, correct? Do we have an opportunity to annex it, or is it not going to be contiguous?
We may be able to. We'll have to look at that.
Okay. Right up to the airport.
To annex, you say?
Yeah.
The neighbor owns the back and both sides of the property. And the airport's right behind him. So I don't know how to get through the neighbor.
So that's a no.
Yeah, there, I mean, there are a couple options, whether by connecting roads or by talking to connecting property owners. It seems like if that's important to the city, we could, we can look at it. And of course, you can, you can operate it without it being inside the city.
One other asset we have, we haven't talked about, but we have, we didn't do it the last couple of years, as we became more inactive, but we had put out newsletters four times a year, and they all had short articles, historical articles. So, and I think we have all those on WordPerfect or whatever. That would be easy to put into history and pull some of those out and maybe make a booklet or whatever, other publications. But those were sent to all the members. And of course, we sent these to the libraries and the history museum and so on, free of charge.
Pardon, remind me how often you had it operating over the last few years? Like once a month or?
Well, when I had help, we would do it twice a month, starting in May and go through September. And then the last few years, we did it once a month, and we found out the attendance was about the same. We have anywhere from 100 to 200 visitors a year for those roughly five months. There's no heat at the mill. There's electric, no heat, and no toilet facilities either, so.
It's a summer thing.
It's a summertime sort of thing, yeah. But it could go up through October easily, and probably could start in April if we had to do that. One thing Jason mentioned, also, we used to have these pancake brunches or whatever. And there is a cookhouse that was built behind the mill, and it has propane grills in it. And we have a full range of large tables and chairs and tents that can be set up in the yard. So if there were special events that could be done, I mean, that would be easily accommodated.
Pancakes sounds like fun.
Pardon?
You said pancakes?
I'm sorry.
Pancakes? I don't hear well either.
Oh, yeah, it was pancake and sausage breakfast. So we would usually raise maybe $600, $800 for a day. And then they had other things out there, like sheep sharing and other demonstrations of old equipment. And that's another possibility. There are a bunch of people that like these old farm equipments, and they have shows. And that would be a site that could be used for that.
That's great. So does anybody else have any questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Can I ask you real quick, off topic? Was he on city council here?
Yeah.
What year were you in city council here?
'70 to '74. And I have to say this, I shouldn't. I admire that you only have meetings every two weeks, and apparently, they last a couple hours usually. We met every week, and they were always three or four hours.
What ward were you?
Pardon?
What ward?
Seventh.
Seventh ward?
All right. The history minds work together.
It was fourth ward, too. I was fourth for a while, and they changed boundaries.
That happens sometimes.
Thank you for serving our community.
Our family was friends with Ken Carvell, so appreciate the reference to him wonderfully. All right, is this something that we are prepared to
Move to the agenda.
Move to an agenda?
Yes.
Yes? All right. We'll move it to an agenda. Now, there was one request for making an announcement that's specific to something that's coming up this weekend. Under that, and then if somebody else has like one announcement or two announcements, we could do that, but otherwise, we are not having announcements.
I just wanted to do an announcement for our collaboration with the DOH project for cleanups. That project will start this week on the Star City side, over the bridge area, on March 29th at 9:00 to 11:00, with the help of WVU, student government, Star City, and Mon County, and the city of Morgantown, and a lot of volunteers, Morgantown High as well. So that project will be from 9:00 to 11:00 on Saturday. And on Sunday, we will also be working from 1:00 to 3:00 on the medium, doing bike cleaning there as well as wheat eating and debris removals. So very excited about this project, and it'll be our first week to find out how it goes.
Where do people meet if they want to volunteer?
Thank you. I was actually going to say, CBS parking lot across from the Sheets at the bottom, or right across from the Star City Bridge, on both days. Thank you.
Excellent. Does anyone else have an urgent, urgent, urgent announcement?
I would like to announce move to adjourn.
Second. Perfect. Thank you very much.